Okay, going live in three, two, you're live.
Good afternoon, on behalf of the Brentwood Board of Education and the District Administrator, Mr. Lochner, Ms. O'Connor, welcome to tonight's April 21st Board of Education meeting. I would like to pull the meeting to order at 5:15 PM. And with that being said, I need a motion to convene the workshop at 5:15 PM.
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Moore.
Second.
Second by Trustee Ergos, all in favor?
Aye.
Sentience opposed, so moved. So now I'm gonna ask if everybody could just be a fan for the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
State of America.
The pledge stands, one nation, under God.
Under God.
Liberty and justice for all.
So, Mr. Lochner, board members, I know it's been an incredibly busy couple of months, if not just the entire year, we have been on such a roller coaster ride with everything, you know, about this pandemic and what we're facing. And this is just another one of those moments where here we are, April 21st, and we are exploring the option of how it is that we're gonna bring back any of the children that wanna come to our schools five days a week because of the changes in New York State rules and regs in terms of the social distancing. We had the opportunity to explore those options via survey that the district sent out to all parents, all households over the weekend. And that's what tonight's meeting is going to be about. It's going to be about what those results are and how it is that we are going to move forward. So without further ado, Mr. Lochner, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flesciano. Yes, you're right, what happened now, it's about about a week and a half ago, the the New York State Department of Health came out and they adopted some of the CDC guidelines. And the big one for us is the three feet between students in a classroom. That obviously was a game changer for us. I would like to just say for a moment, though, I am, you know, extremely proud of the Brentwood School District. We have, obviously, at the behest of the Board of Education, really stuck to those guidelines. And I'm really, really happy about that. And I think that has done a lot to mitigate the spread within our school community, which I do send out district-wide, I send out numbers every single day. And today, for matter of fact, there were just three positive cases among students, zero cases among staff members. And that number has been pretty, we've even gone down to zero on certain days and as few as one and two on other days. So we really have done, you know, the right thing here in the Brentwood community. So what happened was they came out with these guidelines, which we were not sure they were going to do, adopt those new guidelines for schools. So when they did, you know, again, we met last week, the Board of Education wanted to meet again publicly, we discussed it, we sent out a survey this past weekend. And there were quite a few respondents, obviously thousands of respondents. And we want to thank the parents for always going on to Parent Square, our new tool, which has really been a tremendous, a tremendous tool for the Brentwood School District, not just for for central administration, but every single school has been sending out Parent Square notices, really virtually on a daily basis, and as well as teachers. Teachers are constantly communicating with their parents and students via Parent Square. So it's really been tremendous. So we actually received four hundred and four, fourth, I'm sorry, four thousand four hundred forty-seven yeses. In other words, there were four thousand four hundred and forty-seven parents who responded for their students and said, yes, we would like them to come back to school five days a week, return to school five days a week. So now that's district-wide, that's obviously grades one through 12. Kindergarten is remaining the same, as you guys know, but I'll just say it real quickly, they've been in school for five days a week for the entire school year, they're just doing half-days, okay, for about two and a half hours a day, AM and PM session. That we're not changing, it's really just grades one through 12. So now each one of the schools, obviously, they had their own respondents. So the four thousand four hundred and forty-seven, we split up between the schools. Obviously, the law, the the school which had the most amount of students was the high school, they had six hundred and seventy-three students respond, for example, saying they would like to return to school for five days a week. Obviously, that choice was completely up to parents and students, I'm sure they spoke about it, and we're again, very thankful that they responded. So now, now what happens is, you know, we can't just, obviously, you know, snap our fingers, there's a lot that goes into returning students to school. Besides their schedule changes, we have to take a look at each individual student to make sure that they, when they return to school, that we don't disrupt their schedule. I will tell you, too, there is a couple of things to consider for families, just to let you know what we're experiencing here in the school district, and that is, we're right in the middle of testing. Our ELA testing is actually occurring this week, grades three through eight. It's also next week, three grades three through eight. So that actually kind of threw a little bit of a monkey wrench into into this whole project that we're undertaking, bringing kids back. So that kind of something I want you to consider. Also, one thing to note, also, the rules did not change in terms of the cafeterias, okay, the cafeterias still have to be six feet between students who are eating. In other way, we use cafeterias for study halls. Obviously cafeterias, if you're in a study hall and you're not eating, you have your mask on, you only have to be three feet away. But for the most part, we use the cafeterias as places for students to have breakfast or lunch. So that also posed a little bit of a problem, I should say, an obstacle for building administration and staff to work through, and they're currently working through that, obviously, because not every school, for example, let's take the middle schools. I'm sure most families are familiar with the middle schools, if they've had a child pass through the school, there's actually one very small cafeteria and one, probably about two times the size, maybe three times the size of the smaller one. And that's been tight for middle school students as it is, to to maintain the six-foot distance with the number of hybrid students coming to us. So the staff is currently working through different options. And probably what will happen is, what will happen in most schools, students that are not eating will actually be able to go out and have a recess outside. So they'll play for fifteen, twenty minutes, and then maybe they'll switch positions, and then they'll come back into the cafeteria, and those kids will go out and play for fifteen, twenty minutes under supervision, obviously. So there's a lot of, you know, supervisory decisions that also have to be made. So that's what, that's what all of the schools have been working on diligently since we gave them the numbers from the survey at the end of Monday, this is now Wednesday. So that's where we are. I also want to say this week, I'm happy to say, all of the advanced placement students have returned to us full-time. The reason we did that, obviously, is their their tests are in May, those tests have not been canceled, obviously, AP exams. So we wanted them to come in for at least a month so they can be with their teachers for five days a week, so we're thrilled to have the AP kids with us. So here's where we are, and please stop me if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, I just wanna ask you one question.
Sure.
Come September, the kindergarten is, they're gonna be in full day, right?
Yes, I mean, that is our, we anticipate that we will return to full-day kindergarten next year, okay? Again, these are decisions that may be impacted over the summertime if there are adjustments by the state ed or the New York State Department of Health, or the governor, for that matter. You know, if if they say something that will change the calculus, then I'll have to come back to the board and that decision may be changed. However, right now, I think the board and certainly administration, we're thinking kindergarten will be back full-time in September. All right. So now, the return for students in general, this is it, we're going to actually return, it's gonna be kind of staggered throughout the district, and a lot of it does have to do with the ability to work around, like I said, the testing schedule, as well as other things in terms of staffing in the schools. So next, it's actually gonna, the first group of students that will come back to us en masse will be the ninth and tenth, the ninth and twelfth graders at the high school and the freshman center. So the freshman center and the high school, we have actually well over three hundred, almost four hundred ninth graders at the high school, as well as those twelfth graders who didn't take advantage of returning to us when we opened it up in February. We had quite a few seniors who wanted to come back to us for the last two months of school. So they'll be returning to us on April 28th, that's next Wednesday, okay? And then, and that's the freshman center, everybody who returned to us will be coming back, unless, and I'll explain, there are some exceptions, but I'll explain that in a moment. And then the next day is April 29th, okay, that's obviously a Thursday, and that will be grades one, two, and three, and grades six, one, two, three, and grade six will return to us on that Thursday. And then the following Monday, which is May 3rd, that will be all of the other grades will return to us, and that's grades four and five, grades seven and eight, and grades 10 and 11. Okay? So those are the return dates. Now, I did say that there may be some, there may be some difficulties. We're thrilled that many remote students, we sent this out, obviously, district-wide, we did not want to, you know, discriminate against hybrid and remote, we wanted to give everyone the opportunity to return. So now I have an opportunity to speak to the community and to the board. There were many remote students who took advantage of that, and we're thrilled, we want them back for five days a week. However, there may be some problems, not not many, but there may be some problems with a fully remote student returning to school. And if there is a problem, central, not central, the building administration will be in contact with the parent and the student. And here's the reason why. You know, remote students, many of them, particularly on the secondary level, they had fully remote teachers, okay? So and for instance, you might be in the high school, you might have four, you might be a remote student with some fully remote teachers. In other words, these are teachers who are also not in teaching in person because of an underlying condition. So if you're taking a class as a remote student with a fully remote teacher, you, and now you wanna come to school five days a week, we actually don't have an in-person teacher for you because that remote teacher is also remote. So that may necessitate a schedule change for you, a remote student. If you're a remote student and you wanna come to school, we might have to change your schedule. So that's why I'm saying that there will be parents of remote students who will be contacted by building administration to go over these very, you know, problems that might arise. Okay, now, this, the same thing may happen on the elementary level, if you're a fully element, if you're a fully remote student on the elementary level, there also might be some hurdles to overcome, not as many, but again, building administration will be in contact with you to let you know the difficulties that they're experiencing, okay, with that schedule change. So I'm, I just said a lot in just a few minutes, but that's, that's where we are. And does anybody, board members, or did anybody send in a question that you'd like me to speak about in terms of, you know, answering any, any question that I might have spoken about already?
Check.
I haven't, I haven't seen any questions.
Okay.
But are there any questions for board members?
How many people actually completed the survey?
Yeah, you know what, if you give me a moment, I think I could.
Did he send that to us?
No, he just sent that yeses, he didn't send.
He sent, he sent the number of people that responded.
I only sent.
So there were, I guess the question is, I mean, there were families out there that basically said that were hybrid or remote, that said they would like to continue on with the schedule that they have.
Exactly. Now, and let me just say something to Maria, thank you very much for bringing that up. First of all, I did wanna say that there are lots of parents, not, you know, there were many parents who could not access the parent square for whatever reason, and that was okay. They actually called the front offices, they actually called central administration as well, and we took their information, and if they were, they wanted to return to school full-time, we put that, we included that in our numbers. So don't worry, if you called and you spoke to someone at the school, your son or daughter has been, you know, put into the pile of changes, care of that. And that's okay, I mean, we understand that not everybody can access it for whatever reason. However, we would obviously like to continue to, you know, encourage parents to access Parent Square, because it's really for their convenience, you know, if anything, it really does help them communicate with the schools, but we'll certainly make those changes. Now, and that was a great question, too, Maria.
Mr. Lochner, so I had, I just, and you and I had a chance to talk about this earlier. So so I know that I'm one of probably many board members who are, and yourself included, I mean, you brought this up, very concerned about the possibility of having students affected in terms of a schedule change, more specifically, changing of a teacher that has gotten to know this child, who's going to be assessing this child at the end of the school year, and really passing on where this child should be come next school year. Is there, are the hybrids going, are the hybrid kids going to be impacted the same way the remote children might be?
Okay, great question, no. The hybrid students, as I sit here this evening, my understanding is that there will be no hybrid students that will have their schedules changed. However, I am going to, you know, say publicly, since we are so large, and there are, you know, multiple reasons that somebody's schedule maybe is, that may occur, that might happen, but I can tell you, you know, I haven't heard of hybrids being changed, but it may actually happen. And again, if it does happen, the the building administration will be in touch with the, with the parents to let them know before we actually actuate that change, because we wouldn't want to do that. And we don't want to change anybody's schedule at this point, but I do want to be honest about the remote students because they do pose some challenges.
Mr. Lochner, do you, do you have an example of how possible change for a student in remote, like, I mean, the first thing that comes to mind as a board member is that you would actually be trying to, you know, place this child who's on fully remote, who wants to come five days a week, into existing classrooms that might have the room for this particular child on the same grade level and on the same, you know, academic level? Is that what we're talking about?
But that, that's it, exactly, yeah, that, you actually just described it, they would be, you know, like I mentioned before, quite possibly, they have a remote teacher that's not going to be in person, so the building administration would say, you know, here is the same period, same subject area, we can put you into this class. But again, they'll, they'll call the parent before they actually do that. And, you know, that is actually what may happen across the district, that people are going to say, you know, there is a problem with this student's, this child's schedule, let me see how I can rectify it, it might only be maybe one class. There were some, I did talk to the high school principal, Mr. Callen, earlier, and he did say that there were some students with four and five remote teachers. Okay, so there, not a lot of kids, but there are some kids with four and five remote teachers, that's going to be a challenge for the building administration to get that student a schedule, but also, it's gonna be a decision that has to be made by the student and parent if they want to continue with that, you know, go down that path of switching.
Mr. Lochner, can you tell me if, if, if any of the fully remote staff is coming back? I know that, you know, with, with the, with the availability of the vaccine, people feeling safer, you know, is that happening at all? I mean, do you see any movement on that, like, is that something that we're experiencing?
It is, it is something that we're, you know, reaching out to the teachers to see if they would consider coming back, if their conditions has changed, if they've taken the vaccine, obviously, we have to be careful in terms of the questions that we ask. To this point, I don't know of any that have returned to us, however, but that is something that we are considering. Obviously, you know, it has to be a decision that's made, you know, because we went through, obviously, their doctor and our doctor to come to this decision, so it would have to be approved by the doctors as well.
Naturally, yep.
All right, I have a question. Can I read this question? All right. What happens if your child is hybrid, and now you don't want them in a class with the extra kids? Can you go remote?
Okay. You know what, I haven't heard that question before, but the answer is yes, I mean, you could. I would ask that, I would tell the community.
They're watching, so you're speaking to them.
Speaking to them. Well, I'm gonna answer your question, and then I'm gonna try to answer Maria's question, she had a two-parter from before, I wanna try to get back to that. So the answer is yes, I mean, you, you have that option to go remote. I will like to, I would like to say to the community again, that we're going to great lengths to make sure that we have three feet in between every student. As a matter of fact, I wanna give a shout-out to Byron McCray and Mike Cruz, they have been traveling the district, going into specific classrooms to help, you know, measure, literally measure between students using desks or tables, and saying, you know what, this class can hold 24 students safely, this class can hold 25, this class 26. So we've gone through it very carefully. So I do want to tell a parent that, I understand, they can make a decision that if they don't wanna send their son or daughter back with a larger class, I would say that, number one, they will be within a safe distance within the classroom, that's number one. Number two, there is, in all likelihood, the, their son or daughter's classes will not grow by that much. I mean, we are an incredibly large district, and when I say, like I said, the high school had 673 kids say yes to returning, I would just wanna explain a few things more about that. First, we had a lot of parents who took the question, and they, they, their son or daughter is already in school five days a week, okay? So that's number one, and actually, I know that I have the numbers, out of that 673 kids who are coming back to us in the high school, 50 of them already were in five days a week. So that number is actually down to 623. And then I, there's something else I need the community to understand. We are, we have green and gold days. So if I tell you the high school, I'm gonna round it down to make it very easy, the numbers here, let's say I said to you, the high school is going to get 600 students back full-time, five days a week. Well, you have to remember, 300 of those students, I'm gonna cut it directly in half, 300 of those students were green students, green day students, 300 were gold students. So in reality, on a green day, there's only 300 more students coming to school in the high school. And on gold day, there's really only 300 more students coming to the school on gold day. And the reason I'm saying that is because in all likelihood, many, most of the classes will not be at 30, what, 25? I would suspect many of them will be below 20, and, you know, maybe into the low twenties in some classes, but many still will be in the mid-teens, 15, 16, because of, you know, partly of what I explained to you here, and partly because we still have a lot on remote.
Mr. Lochner, would that also apply to the other schools, freshman center, the elementary schools, middle school?
Yes, thank you, Paulie, yeah. As a matter of fact, I spoke to Mr. Otira today over at the freshman center, and he did tell me, on average, I think his number was about 118 more kids per day. Now, he had 266 that responded, but again, using that, you know, green and gold, it's really only 118 additional students every day. So when we spread that out into all of the classrooms, you know, some might obviously more return, and some classes less than others, but generally speaking, I don't think you're going to have packed classrooms for the remainder of the year, which, by the way, you know, where, you know, we want to give an opportunity to every student to come back, but, you know, we wanted to do it in a safe way that parents are comfortable with. So these are numbers that I'm hoping the community is comfortable with. If you chose five day a week, you're not, you're not coming back into a school that's gonna be packed like sardines, okay, right away. So we're really doing it in a responsible way, and the community is obviously a partner in this. And now, to answer your question, Maria, I think you asked before, if, if you wanted to be, if you're a hybrid student that wanted to remain hybrid, you're still a hybrid student. And, you know, you're just coming on green day, and you're just, or you're just coming on gold day. And there were lots of parents who, who chose that, and lots of students who chose that, and there could be many reasons behind it. And with, I don't have to venture a guess, everybody has their, that right to make that decision, I'm glad they, they exercise that. So yes, they're still remote students, they're still hybrid students. I will, though, again, I'll, I'll say this to the community now, in all likelihood, they will, you know, we, we do want all of our students back in September. And if things continue the way they're progressing, in all likelihood, we will have the vast majority of our students back in September. We hope that only, you know, maybe really for medical conditions, that a student will be on remote teaching next year, but we really hope to have the vast majority return to us in September.
So I have a question here in regards to the hybrid student that goes back to school five days a week, but before you do, if you have to change a schedule around, you will notify the parent first and have the parent decide if they wanna continue with the change or not?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, nobody's going to have a schedule change without someone from that school contacting mom or dad.
Okay, now, if the classrooms already have 13 to 14 kids in the class right now, like especially the elementary.
Right.
And like the other students want to come back, but there's no room, they'll be put into another room? That's what I'm being asked.
Right. Now, I obviously spoke to a number of the elementary school principals today, I don't, I don't see that happening by what you're describing, Cindy, that, that, let's say, you, you know, you're in a classroom, there's 13 to 14 that are hybrid in per day. If, if, yeah, another 10 chose to come back, your class might be at 23, 24, but I don't know of any class at this point that is actually, you know, too many kids have chosen to return on the elementary level, and we're putting them in another class, again.
That was just a question asked.
Yeah, if that does happen, that falls under the same category. If we have to move you from teacher X to teacher Y because it's overflowing, we will call you about that. I don't anticipate that happening on the elementary level, but that's a possibility.
Mr. Lochner, what's the last day of school on the high school level? I know they finish earlier than the rest of the district.
I think it's June 25th, if I'm not mistaken, oh my gosh.
But that's not the last day, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't mean school, I mean classes. Don't the classes finish before?
It's, thank you for.
Like, yeah, it's about the second week in June, I think.
No, it's a little bit later this year. The reason being, the region's examinations, as you, you know, and I'm sure the community knows by now, that they've been reduced to four, okay? And they actually don't start till June 17th. So we're actually going to be in school really up to June 16th, which is much later than normal. So there will be final exams at the secondary level on June 14, 15, and 16th, if I'm not mistaken, but, you know, they will be in school.
So we're looking at the high school level, students will be in class possibly about six weeks. So we're looking at the high school level, students will be in class possibly about six weeks. Six weeks and days, maybe, once they start.
Yeah, six, six to seven weeks, right. Six to seven weeks.
Which is really in perspective for parents making a decision that, and students.
Mr. Loscher, could, I mean, I know this is a tough question, uh, to ask, and I know you might not have the exact number, but you were making a really good point in terms of, you know, uh, the number of students coming back in. Do, is there any way that you could, that you could give us a guess as to how many students we have at the high school right now that, that would be roaming the halls in addition to the extra three hundred? Like, you know, you know, in a, in a building that was, you know, holding up to forty-five hundred kids a day, you know, e- even maybe the freshman center, I could probably take a guess at the freshman center, knowing that, you know, a, uh, graduating class is around twelve hundred. Um, what, what is the student attendance now, uh, in terms of those, those live bodies? On, on a, on a hybrid schedule?
Yeah, no, 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 and I, you know, I understand completely. It's, it's a little less, it's about eleven hundred and fifty at the high school are in attendance on a daily basis currently. That's an average number. It might be a little bit lower, but it might be a little bit higher. And I know that, I actually, you know, give a shout out to Mr. Coleman. I, I give him a call, uh, quite frequently and ask him what the attendance numbers are. Uh, we know that every day because of scholarship, which we, uh, you know, purchased a couple of years ago. It's a great tool that we use at the high school. So it's about eleven hundred and fifty. So, in all honesty, this change will probably, uh, will probably have somewhere in the vicinity of fifteen hundred students, possibly fourteen hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred students in attendance, uh, every day for those remaining, remaining seven weeks.
So, so the, the point being that even when we are absorbing this additional three hundred student, you know, uh, student count, we're still at or around maybe even less than a third of what we would normally have on any other year. And that is, that's remarkable. And, and I wanna say that that's, you know, I think that, you know, trying to, you know, uh, sway everybody's, uh, fears and, you know, and try to settle that, uh, I think that that is incredibly manageable. And, you know, and I, if that's the route you choo- choose, I believe that, that it's, you know, we could still be safe and we could still be, uh, uh, adequate in terms of those uh, concerns. And, um, you know, to the point that, that, that Ms. Burgos was, was saying, you know, we are within, you know, uh, uh, the end of the last, uh, quarter. And, and, uh, I'm just glad that we're, we're able to offer this to, uh, anybody that's, that wants to come back by this week.
Yeah, I mean. I'd like to ask the question again, does this also apply to the, um, middle schools and elementary schools?
Uh, in, in terms of the, uh.
The number of, uh, the, the, how it's manageable for the high school, is it manageable for those others, other buildings?
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great question too, Paul. I'll, I'm just looking right now, um, y- you know, I'm looking at some of these numbers, and I'll, I'll just use a few of them. Some of these smaller schools like Laurel Park and Hemlock Park, uh, Hemlock Park, for instance, had a hundred and forty-seven kids uh, wanting to return to five day. Laurel Park had two hundred and nine. So again, if you use my theory of cutting that in half, it might only be about another seventy-five to a hundred and some odd, you know, returning to school five days a week. Uh, then we have some of the larger schools, like, uh, Twin Pines was three hundred and forty-nine. Uh, Northeast had three hundred and fifty-seven students, uh, asking to come back full-time. So I think those numbers, from what I understand, and I was over at Northeast, uh, with Ms. Cortese today, and, uh, she has her, y- you know, people prepared, uh, and, and comfortable with, with welcoming those kids back. I don't think they're going to be overwhelmed. They will have to, as I said, work with the cafeterias. Okay, a lot of things too, just a little side story here, but, you know, a lot of the buildings, we had to empty out our classrooms, uh, to make room for the six feet. So number one, that's another reason why it's taken us a little bit. We have to bring back our furniture that's been put in various places across the district. And a lot of the cafeterias actually became partial storage, uh, you, you know, compartments for tables and chairs, because they weren't using the cafeteria. Many of the cafeterias weren't being used on the elementary level. So we have to get that, those, uh, tables and chairs out of the cafeteria, get them set up for the six-foot distance. But even the elementary schools are working out, I have to, you know, commend all of the building administration who are working on this. They're making rotating schedules for breakfast and lunch. In the elementary school, you know, lots of our kids eat lunch, breakfast, rather. They grab, they grab breakfast and they go to the classroom. Believe it or not, they can't, they, these, these students have to work on that, because you can't have two kids eating breakfast less than six feet away. And they're being very conscientious about this. They really are. So many of them are, are, you know, working with their gymnasium, cafeteria, and classrooms, and they're rotating staff around to supervise smaller number of kids. Um, but no, I don't think to, that was a long answer, Paul. I put a lot of other stuff in there, but I don't think it's going to overwhelm any one school of the returning students.
Alright, Kathy sent us some questions. I don't know, somebody wanna read? Want me to read? Somebody?
Um, the, the, um, the return date, uh, for the third grade, uh, Mr. Loschner, is the twenty-ninth. I have that on.
Yes.
Like, the, the return date, there was a question about returning, uh, the, the twenty-ninth uh, for third graders. Uh, I guess the other question was, uh, was already answered in terms of the remote learning, uh, hybrid kids will be, uh, and remote kids will be given, uh, option to maintain.
Yep.
What they have. Um, and, uh, I guess the other question was, um, you know, what's the rush about returning the kids back to school? I think that we've already answered that, uh, uh, as well. And the last question was the, uh, about holding in-person board meetings. Again, that is something that we've answered in the past. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, but maybe people are wa- excuse me, maybe people are watching that didn't hear your answer. So maybe you should explain why we're not, 'cause I'm gonna be honest with you. If we're sending kids back, I think we should be back. I don't think it's right. I really don't. I'm just, that's my opinion.
Okay.
But you should answer and tell them why you don't want it, why, what the reason is, 'cause.
We've already, we, we will be asking that, we will be answering that question every single meeting. It's come up every single meeting.
Yeah, but there's people that, that haven't watched the other meetings, maybe.
Yeah, and I would recommend that they, I would recommend that they watch, re-watch those, same, answer the same question that we've had.
That's, that's, that's really not right, but alright, that's, that's your opinion.
Yup.
I'm glad.
So any other questions from board members on tonight's topic?
And I think Kathy has another one, one minute on another page.
So, in September, Rich, I mean, parents are asking, are we gonna offer the hybrid? I know you said no, possibly just remote and, and in-person. I mean, if we continue with the health crisis that we're experiencing now, is this something, you know, possibly that we may have to open up again?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, you know, we're gonna follow it closely. I mean, uh, you, you know, uh, we were instructed last year, obviously, after we closed in March, we were instructed over the summertime to come up with a plan that incorporated both hybrid and remote learning, and, and, uh, that's what we, we did. I'm just anticipating what SED and the governor and, uh, the, the New York State Department of Health will be telling us this year. I believe, from what I'm hearing, is that it will be just in-person and remote for, uh, you, you know, a small number of reasons. That's what I'm hearing. Um, if, if, in fact, uh, it changes, then obviously we'll, we'll, you, you know, we'll change accordingly.
Mr. Loscher, I, there is a question. I don't know if, if you already went over it. What happens to bus transportation? So the question is, you know, there's a three-foot, uh, distance has been relaxed within the school district. Um, we certainly know that, uh, within the school, with the classroom, certainly know that there are some exceptions, cafeteria, phys ed, and those specials. What are the rules concerning transportation? And I think that was a very, uh, a valuable question. It just came in.
Yeah, that's a great question also, and I, I appreciate that. And I'm surprised, I, you, you know, I have so many things to, that are on my notes here, and transportation.
Doing great, they're doing great.
But, uh, you know, we're, we're also, obviously, we have to adjust all of our transportation, uh, and some students take a smaller bus, and that actually has a specific route. And, uh, as soon as that, as soon as some of those kids return, we actually have to reroute those buses, which also takes us, uh, a couple of days to accomplish that. Um, and that's, that's another reason for somewhat of a delay here. So, in terms of the, the larger bus, uh, we're at thirty-six. And, uh, you know, here's the reason why, that the seat immediately behind the bus driver has to be vacant, according to the rules. And the seat across from that, the first seat on the other, other aisle, that has to be vacant after that. Then, a, what, you're allowed one, one child per seat, per row. And they can be, all be within, they can all be, uh, three feet apart, if you situate them correctly. And that can get a max of thirty-six in a, in a, uh, school bus. Plus, the windows are open, and the masks are being worn. And that's all within the CDC guidelines. Now, you can have multiple students in a seat, and you will see that occasionally. And that will be because those are family members living in the same household. Uh, they actually, brother and sister, for example, can sit, uh, next to one another. If it happens to be two cousins that live uh, in the same house, they also can sit next to one another, for example. Uh, so that would raise the, the number of students up, uh, slightly. But thirty-six is the number. I will tell you this, on the elementary level, we're, we're, the, more students are taking the bus on the elementary level. On the secondary level, there's, uh, you know, many, many buses that are under, you know, utilized at this point. Maybe only four, five, six, ten kids in it, twelve kids. So I, we feel fairly confident that we're going to have students in the bu- uh, on, on the buses at a safe distance. If we find out no, and that's obviously Ms. O'Connor and Mr. and Mr. Carlin are actually in charge of that, and that's what they'll be looking at over the next week. If the number exceeds thirty-six, they will order another bus and have them run that route. Uh, but also, the smaller buses, as I mentioned earlier, they, uh, they have a, a limitation of maybe six or seven, uh, in a bus. And that's why we'll have to be doing some rerouting of those buses and adding additional buses, uh, you, you know, as that, as that number goes past six or seven.
Mr. Loscher, and, uh, any of those children who are fully remote that are coming back, uh, the district will supply transportation to all students who are entitled to transportation.
Absolutely. And, uh, you know, and I wanna thank the parents again, who, they checked, one of the questions had to do with transportation. And, uh, many of them checked, no tr- you, you know, they did not need transportation. That will go into our system, and a bus will not be assigned to them. If they check that they do need transportation, that will also go into the system, and a bus will be assigned to them. Hybrid students who are already taking a bus, they just, we're not rerouting those buses, just continue to take that bus five days a week.
Mr. Loschner, there was another question, um, from a student, I believe.
That's what I was, yes.
Right, um, he wants to know if he chose, he or she, that if they chose to stay remote, can they stay remote?
Absolutely.
Address that?
Yes.
And also, there are some parents and possibly students who have not answered the survey. Do they still have time to answer and make a choice?
They, they do. Uh, I, I am going to ask the community, uh, again, to be, y- y- if you could give the school a call tomorrow with that decision, that would be great. I mean, just from this discussion here this evening, I think you get the senses to how many things have to happen between uh, our student management system, transportation. Uh, we have food service too. I didn't mention that. Obviously, you know, we have to bring in additional food service workers for some of these schools that have gone up a little bit, uh, because we really, we really run that organization very tightly. Uh, so we'll, we'll have to know about that. So there's lots that go into it. And I would ask families, if you could make that phone call as quickly as possible.
Thank you. And I just, this is just an aside, somebody wanted to know if I was in the Bahamas. No, I'm home. There's my background. Here I am.
No, but Ms. Felix, she's in the Bahamas.
I'm gonna join her.
I'll start no trouble.
Alright, listen, Mr. Loschner, I, I know there was a lot of information there, um, and there's still so many things to be done. Um, I'm going to suggest that any community member that has, uh, questions even beyond tonight's meeting, to please forward them to the district clerk. She will reroute them to wherever it is that they could be best answered. If that's the building principal, then that's where it goes. If it's to transportation or Loschner, then that's.
I would appreciate, I would appreciate the being sent to the whole board. Because we've had, we've had, we've had questions sent to certain people, and the, and the community never got a response. I've had them sent to me numerous times.
I, I'm saying that.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and, and Ms. Howie, I mean, if you could forward those questions, once they come to you, you know, that would be, that would be wonderful also, so that they don't get lost. But the idea behind this is that we would be sending it to the person who would be answering the question, or best suited to answer the question, uh, like Mr. Loschner said. If you are thinking about changing or making a change now, please, tomorrow, it's a matter of urgency at this point, contact your, your local building administrator so that those arrangements can be made, uh, and, uh, and your wishes can be, um, uh, filled. So, Mr. Loscher, go ahead.
I, yeah, I just have a couple of announcements, if I could, could, uh, do that real quickly. First, I just wanna let the community know that kindergarten and UPK registration is currently open for next year. Please give, uh, the district a call, a schedule, and appointment for you to come in and register your son or daughter. Uh, and also, this year, we, I'm sorry, Ms. Felix?
I'm sorry, is that for individuals who are also registering for first, second, and beyond?
Uh, no, well, if they're already registered in the school, they'll just be rolled over to next year.
If they're not involved.
New entrance.
Oh, if they're new entrance, then please call the school right away, yes, and we will schedule it. If there are new entrants for this year, that, have them call, and we, you know, we're obligated to get them in right away to school for this year, and we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay, but, and also, I wanted to let the community know, we actually still have, um, some UPK seats available. If there are students, it's, it's only two months left. But if you would like to register your, uh, your child for UPK this year, give us a call. Uh, it's six-three-one, four-three-four, two-three-zero-one. And, um, y- you know, we will get your, your son or daughter into UPK this year. But if not, you know, register for next year, and we'll make an appointment. Also, I wanted to thank, uh, y- you know, Ms. Young, personally, uh, for purple, Purple Up For Military Kids, which was a huge hit today, uh, just a huge hit. Uh, the amount of people that wore purple was really moving. Uh, our PR firm is actually going to put together a video, and we'll put that out on Facebook and other media to really highlight all of the kids and staff members across the district who wore purple up for military kids. And I, I think it was really, it's, it's just a wonderful, uh, it's a wonderful cause to shine a light on, in that we have, uh, many community members, as I mentioned last week, uh, who are, who serve currently in the military or have served in the past. Plus, we have lots of graduates, a tremendous amount of graduates, who I think is, uh, is really, um, uh, it, it's inspiring to me, to see how many graduates go into the military service every year. And obviously, we wanna recognize their sacrifice, but also, I thought it was a great organization to recognize the sacrifice of military kids. Because when their moms and dads are away, obviously, uh, you know, that, that's quite a sacrifice as well. So, uh.
Yeah, so, so, Mr. Loscher, I mean, with that, I, I also just wanted to do, I mean, I know that this has been, uh, a really difficult year for everybody. I wanted to, uh, thank, um, you know, personally, and, and on behalf of the board, um, everybody who's involved in all of these, uh, changes that we've been talking about throughout the year. This has been like, you know, trying to shoot a moving target. Um, I especially wanted to thank, uh, the, the BNG staff, the custodial staff, who will now have to rearrange all these schools. Uh, you know, again, at a moment's notice, and, and they just, they do it without, you know, any complaints. They do it with, with a sense of purpose, and, um, and, you know, and it, and it's, and it's above and beyond. I, and I, so, so I, I really do, everybody from the building principals who are now looking at the schedules, to the teachers that are absorbing these, these students, uh, five days a week. Uh, you know, the, the, the building staff, the kitchen staff, the TAs who are also so welcoming. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's been a lot. And, um, and I'm just glad to, uh, to see that, uh, everybody is cooperating and, and kind of moving in the, in the right, or in the same direction. So, Mr. Loscher, I know that, uh, you've been out to the buildings, you've had these meetings already, uh, during the last couple of days. And, uh, and thank you and your staff for, uh, everything that you're doing.
No, we, we appreciate that, Ms. Feliciano. Yeah, I mean, uh, there, there's so many people, uh, that have, uh, worked. No, we, we appreciate that, Ms. Feliciano. Yeah, I mean, uh, there, there's so many people, uh, that have, uh, worked tirelessly all year long, and then you, you throw this into, uh, the mix, uh, with, uh, two months left, and I tell you what, uh, really, I want to thank, obviously, BIPSO, they've been tremendous, uh, their members, uh, the BTA members, uh, stepped right up. Uh, the TAs, uh, and monitors, Ms. Rivera is just a wonderful, wonderful, uh, person, and she, uh, has a great staff too, and they've been, uh, tremendously helpful. And they, their schedules and their life is going to be kind of tipsy-turvy over the next few weeks as they kind of adjust to different schedules. And, uh, y- you know, it's, it's the custodians, the security, uh, the nurses, we're really, we're, we're very, very uh, thankful for everybody who pitches in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I have another question. Uh, it says, although, also, I answered no, but want to change yes. Do I have the ability to change my answer?
So we convince people.
Did I, did I read that right, Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, I'm, uh, the same, the same thing holds true. If they could just give a call tomorrow morning to the building, you know, because like I said, we, they do have to make quite a few changes, uh, you know.
Okay, and the last question is that Kathy sent, will UPK be offered full-time next year? And I think you've already answered that, right?
Uh, I'm not sure if I did, but I think the, the answer is yes. We'll, we'll have full-day UPK as well as half-day UPK.
Okay.
So with that being said, uh, thank you so much, Mr. Lochner, Ms. O'Connor, Howie.
Robert.
Um, on behalf of the board, go ahead.
One more question came in.
Go ahead. Um, okay, so, last question is, how soon should transportation forms, uh, uh, need to be submitted for, uh, the change? Uh, I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if, uh, okay, so the, the additional second part of that would my, I would need my son to be dropped off at Shepherd's Gate. So I guess those.
School question.
Yep, so, so those are, those are, those are part of the changes that we're talking about right now in terms of the transportation needs. And I would say that that would be part of the, the, the stuff that would be handled at the building level, getting the information to central. So, Mr. Lochner, isn't that just goes hand in hand with what you're talking about now?
Uh, yes, it does, uh, but I'm going to ask Stacy, she probably knows a little bit more. You, you want to make sure that the building knows, because there is a certain bus that they have to get on to take, uh, over to, uh, Shepherd's Gate, so. I, I, I would, if I was my, you know, mom and dad, a guardian, I'd want to just double-check that they, they have that down correctly. But Stacy, what, anything else the parent should know?
Uh, yeah, if I could. Um, if a student is returning, uh, from remote or even hybrid five days a week, and they're going to be transported to and from their house, there's no form that they have to submit. Simply, you know, answering this survey will get the information to transportation, so we can take care of that. If there is a Shepherd's Gate or a babysitter stop, you know, that, um, you're going to need instead for your child, there is that babysitter request form that we would need submitted at the transportation office. Um, it's on our website, you could print it out, you can email it back in or fax it back in, but we would absolutely need that form to set up that other location for transportation.
And that, and that form should be submitted as soon as possible?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, um, again, thank you so much to everybody for all the hard work and for, uh, you know, just going with the flow and doing what we can to service the children of this community. Uh, with that being said, could I have a motion to adjourn tonight's workshop?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sephiri, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Moore, if we can have everybody turn on the mics. For, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, sentience, so moved. Um, thank you so much and have a wonderful night, everyone.
Good night, night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night now, good night now.